Hello, everybody.
Ooh, it's heat.
6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. If you'll join me for the pledge of belief. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We're live from downstairs in the town hall because everything is set up for voting tomorrow. And so therefore, we're down here in a little bit tighter quarters. Yeah, I did break my shoulder, that's why this is like this. And I asked my board to try to keep me on track and everything if I mess up. So we'll start with the select board meeting, select board minutes for October 7th, 2019, which are in your packet. Any comments, corrections on those minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes for October 7th, 2019 as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded to accept those minutes for October 7th, 2019. Any discussion on that motion?
Just thank you for doing those.
Thank you. Great, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor? We have warrants, several of them, we have 16 and 17. So Ralph, you're the person who initially did the review.
I am the person, so...
If you'll give us a quick overview of these.
Let me give you a summary as best I can.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion to accept them first and then discussion after? Or would you like to review first?
Why don't you just go ahead and do the review first and enter your motion?
Alright. Warrant 16 A and B, $373,687.91. And then followed by warrant 17, which is payroll, $14,397.85 for a grand total of $388.79.76. In warrant 16, the big hitters, another payment to Callahan for the dam work of $28,298.07. We paid our county tax, which I understand is a one-time deal, thank God. It's $285.399.45. And we had a bill for our crack ceiling, which I think came up pretty well, was good. I think we got most of the problem areas. And that one came to a total of $30,778.95. So then I would move that we approve warrant 16 A and B. And warrant 17 aggregate, $388.079.76.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the warrant 16 and 17 has been moved in the amount of $388.079.76. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion?
I just want to ask Eric a question, would you rather I do it during the mandatory section?
Find out.
What is the status of the dam?
It is nearing completion. We have finished all the work in the wet, so to speak, outside of removing the copper dams. And so they're now working above water. The concrete's done, the spillway is done, the bladder and the actual dam gate have been installed. Now they're working on the gatehouse, which will house the controls and mechanisms to operate the dam. Even though the mechanics aren't fully installed, it is an air bladder system, so they can control it with a central air compressor, which is nice to know. If we have a technical failure, that it's that simple to operate. So it's operating and it's in process of being wrapped up.
A follow-up after Catherine's again?
It looked really high when I went by a couple of days ago. So, and it didn't look like any of the bladder was up. Will we be able to see that when it's up? Or will it always be up?
It will, you likely won't be able to see it because it will be set to maintain a certain level. They want to have some free board, but it won't be easy to see up, put it that way. You won't see a two-foot, a three-foot section sticking up above, it'll be a small, a small, a small bit.
Thank you.
Project on budget?
Very close. We have the contractor's estimate and we have what we borrowed in order to cover any contingencies. And we still have, I think, five or six thousand dollars left in that after some pretty sizable changes.
Change orders.
Anchors that weren't specified in the plans that had to be installed. That was like fifteen thousand dollars split with Winthrop. So we're still within the overall budget, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have not voted then on that warrant. So we have the motion, we have the discussion, all in favor? Thank you. I'll move on to warrants 18 and 19, a second warrant during October.
Yeah, warrant 18, A and B, $46,453.62. And warrant 19, again payroll, $14,486.39 for a total of $60,940.1. Items of interest, it's not as scary as the previous warrant. Ones that I think might be of interest would be, we are building our salt reserve, so $34.8712 for another delivery of salt. And the town made its contribution to the union meeting house to the $2.5,000, which was in our budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Unless there are other issues, I would move acceptance of warrants 18 and 19 in the aggregate of $60,940.1.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant 18 and 19 for the amount of $60,941.1. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to select board communications. Does anybody have anything they would like to mention?
I would like to thank the community for supporting our trunk and tree. It was a great success. 100, 290 people went through the library that evening.
How many?
290.
Wow!
On that rainy, miserable night.
Oh, but it was so warm, it was like 67 degrees!
So it was a great success. And several people asked me how they can have a trunk next year and I just told them to call me. So it was great, thank you.
Anything else, also, anybody else?
I'd just like to thank the town public works and the fire department for whatever they did in terms of cleaning up after the latest windstorm. I appreciate all the efforts going to keeping the roads clear and safe.
Anybody else?
I did one more thing.
Sure.
Veterans Day.
Right.
We have a Veterans Day celebration starts at the cemetery at 10:00 a.m. And we follow the third main down to the town office about 11:00. We have a ceremony in front of the memorial. Then there's a free lunch at the Methodist Church, Kent Hill.
So the third main is coming again?
I guess, that's three years in a row.
They like us. That's great.
We give them a nice donation, people put donations in a jar for them.
Great. Okay, we'll move on then to staff reports. Eric, the floor is yours.
Alright, thank you. I'll start my town manager's report and talk about maintenance and infrastructure unless a few items that we've already touched on. No, it's always okay. The word gets out, that's what matters. So I will skip the first item, which is just saying that work on the dam is nearing completion. Temporary support for the library roof was installed last week, so we're quite relieved to have that in place. They did a good job, they jacked up that sagging beam in two spots, not just one, which is what we had originally requested, so they did a little bit extra for us. And the price was very reasonable, I think it was less than $600 to get that done. So I'm quite happy with that. And in conjunction with roof raking this winter, I expect we'll be able to keep that roof in fine shape for one more season until we can finish the job. Mowing is complete and fall brush clearing, culvert clearing and leaf work is ongoing. And I'll thank also the fire department and the staff for their work of cleaning up a lot of material in the roadways, it did help keep things safe. Lee was running around like a madman on Friday. And he did a fantastic job and even helped me out with a couple of things that the staff had, I'd send them home at the end of the day and we had a tree come down and he went and took care of it. So really appreciate that teamwork and cooperation. As mentioned, we are wrapping up winter salt and sand preparation. It's all in the building, at least all that will fit. We probably have about 1,500 yards additional to bring in in January because we are stepping back from having anything more than what will fit in that building without going above the safety line because of some of the issues we've had in the past. So that's ongoing. But the truck inspections are complete and our contractor is ready for work. I will advise anybody that's watching, please check your mailboxes this time of year because the integrity of your mailbox can change over the winter. And if it gets knocked over in the wintertime, it's a lot harder to fix for everybody. And so I do ask folks to just check their mailboxes, check the height, make sure that they meet the DOT recommended setbacks and height so that even if snow coming off the wing of the plow, a lot of times people have damage and it's not the plow that hits it, but it's that heavy snow that's coming off from a vehicle moving 30 miles an hour, 25 miles an hour. It can really put a lot of force down. So those requirements are important. So I just ask folks to keep an eye on that. And we've applied for the LED lighting grant that was discussed in October. So that's moving ahead. Think you've got a pretty good chance, the guy at the nature conservancy was really, really nice to work with. Transfer station, we have two training sessions already behind us for the operations manual. And we have one more scheduled for this Thursday. So that's, it's a very large document, it was several hundred pages by the time it was all said and done with the appendices, but we've been working through them and making sure that the staff have a full understanding of what's needed and why. So that's going very well. The new tenant building is getting ready to go online, we still have more work to do. But we do have information available for the public. And in this year, this month's messenger, we have a write-up about how and why that's all going to be taking place. And we'll be handing out printed information to the public over the next couple of weeks to make sure everybody that goes through the station has an understanding of why we're trying this. And hopefully an understanding that, you know, we need everybody to cooperate to make sure it all works the way it should. Brush and clean wood grinding is underway. This one, it's very important that if you have materials, brush or clean wood that needs to be disposed of, call the transfer station first because there's a fair chance that if you show up, the grinding operation might be underway. And we don't want anybody near those piles or near that equipment when it's happening because those grinders, they make the piles look small, they're huge. And they can sign a piece of two-by-four, you know, 100 feet. So we want to make sure that there's a safe buffer. So call before you bring your material in, your brush or your wood because you might not be able to get close enough to drop it off.
For how long is that, this week?
It shouldn't be more than a couple of days this week, they've been on site, they started.
So after this weekend, we should be all clear?
I think before then, I don't expect they'll be here past Thursday.
And what number do they call, Eric?
They will call 685-3144, Mr. Price.
3144, 685-3144.
That's right.
685-3144.
You gotta charge admission to watch this machine work.
It's amazing, isn't it? It makes an incredible noise and it's so violent.
It's a huge tub grinder on tracks.
Yeah, it's impressive.
$500,000 if it's a nickel.
Okay. And then as far as training, our transfer station staff are going, all of them, regular and backup staff are going to be going to DEP training for core facility operation as well as hazardous and special waste. So it's a refresher for some of them, but I always, when that comes up, I try to push them into it because it's, things change very quickly in the waste management field and there's always something new to learn.
And what day of the week is the 18th?
That's a Monday.
Oh, so we're closed anyway.
We're closed anyway, yeah.
Wonderful.
What you doing on your day off?
Yeah, well, they'll be compensated for it, yeah. Alright.
Why do we close Monday?
Transfer station's always closed Monday.
It's always closed Sunday, Monday.
I thought that was something special.
No, nothing special, it was just the standard. And we could figure out a good way to get them all the training, so we just worked that out as a compromise.
So you're having them come in even though it's closed?
Well, they'll be going down to Portland, so, yeah. Not a bad drive. Administration and personnel, this is a very regrettable situation. Sad to see Maureen Kinder leaving after two years with the town in Reed Field as the librarian. She's done a fantastic job, really left a mark on the organization, on the town. She was one of the people behind the Burns Night, which was quite a successful event last year. And they'll be doing it again this year. So she's been very good to work with, very professional. And we'll certainly miss her dedication to that part of the town. So we are hiring, if anybody has any interest or any leads or wants to put the word out there, we are looking for a librarian up to 28 hours a week.
So not full-time?
Not full-time.
And that's part of the problem in keeping someone?
It is.
Is that the primary reason why she?
I think it's a big part of it. And it's been a big part of it for past librarians as well. But we're just small enough that we don't need full-time and it's a tricky spot. But I think for the right person, it could be a great long-term job. Alright, I'll get moving here.
Read my mind.
Announcements, state referendum, voting tomorrow upstairs, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Come on in and vote. Basically, I think it's just bond issues, two of them, I believe.
One bond, one constitutional amendment.
One bond, one constitutional amendment, okay, thank you. We have another great Veterans Day celebration. It does start at 10:00 a.m. in the cemetery, so we'll be looking forward to that. The town office will be closed that day, November 11th, so please keep that in mind. And I'll announce the Thanksgiving holidays. We have Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving, we're open 8:00 noon as opposed to our normal noon to 6:00. And then Thursday and Friday will be closed.
And can we update the transfer station hours, which are Wednesday 8:00 to noon also, correct?
Yes, transfer station Wednesday 8:00 to noon.
And they are open Friday, but not open Saturday.
That's right, yeah, I should have mentioned that, thank you Catherine.
So you can get rid of the turkey carcass on Friday, but not Saturday.
Or just boil it down and make some stock.
That's true.
Then get rid of it.
On Friday.
On Friday.
We're gonna get Catherine's house, so we'll make some soup to get there.
Any questions on my town manager's report?
Thank you, nicely done, I can.
Thank you.
I'm getting prodded to start using the gavel.
Alright, I'm gonna work quickly through the treasurer's report here.
Just mine.
This is for the month of September. Because we were just into November, so October data is not fully available yet, we haven't done the check rec. So this is September's report. And through September 30th, we've done check reconciliation, no issues were reported. The budget process is underway with planning. And we did have our first budget meeting in October with the committee, which was great to get going. Audit, we are on track to have a report, audit report finished in December with reporting out happening in January, so with the auditors coming to a select board meeting. And this is great to see this on track and timely for the budget process, so very pleased with that. General comments on our September finances, revenue and expenditures should be around 25% for the year-to-date. Real estate payments for the month-to-month, so September this year compared to September of last year are actually down, but our year-to-date is up. That's a reflection of the fact that the tax bills went out a couple of weeks ahead of where they did last year. So that shows a differential there. Motor vehicle revenues continue to surpass expectations and this has been a highlight for us. It's usually around $500,000, $550,000 that we get out of excise taxes for the motor vehicles and it's, we budget conservatively and it is a bright spot for us. Let's see. Okay, transfer station fees are up over 25% or nearly 25% for the second month in a row. So that's been a positive change at that facility. And capital expenditures and protection expenses are showing on this report as being well outside the normal for a month-to-month, you know, something like 2,000% difference. That's just the month-to-month variability. Protection, we had our ambulance services come through in September, that contract, as well as dispatching contract. And then for capital improvements, the dam has been a big chunk of change, but beginning wrapped up. And so other than that, everything looks to be on track. Revenues year-to-date are up 2.9% and expenditures are down 2% over the prior year. So that's about the spread I like to see, not too much more than that. And yeah, we'll keep going, any questions?
No questions for Eric? Okay, we'll move on. Boards, committees, commissions and departments. In your packet, I want to thank the age-friendly committee for their minutes of August 14th, 2019, and the library board minutes for September 11th, 2019. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the select board tonight?
Yes.
Please do, go right up to the microphone. We still do that routine.
Okay, I missed that.
That's okay.
David Tronell, 200 Old Kent Hill Road. And actually, I had a question about the age-friendly committee.
Sure.
I read their survey results recently online and was surprised to see that 80% of the surveyed individuals expressed a strong concern about affordable housing for the elderly. And I met with the committee recently to talk about the importance of a vision statement for the town that would really rally the town members. And I asked them who was following up on that. And I got the impression that they're not and they may not know. Does anybody, can anybody from the select board tell me who's addressing that 80% expression of unaffordable housing for the elderly?
Well, it's certainly, it's not a particular item that we're addressing agenda-wise, but it is something that certainly bears interest in the board.
Boy, that's, that's just more of 20 years of having it codified in the comprehensive plan as a significant mission goal. And if nobody is doing anything about it, but we're all concerned? I think that's unacceptable, Bruce. Does anybody on the board feel differently?
We've, well, it's, I can see it in both directions because there's not a lot the town can do unless the town wants to take on actively pursuing a building project. So we, really what I think our role could be would be to help someone along who wants to bring that kind of housing to Reed Field. And, you know, other towns do things with tax increment financing. If someone were to come and ask for something like that, then that would be something this board could consider. But we can't really go out and say, hey, well, I don't know that we can, I'm not sure that we can, go out and say, hey, we want someone to come in here and do this for Reed Field. Maybe we can, maybe that's something we should look into.
I wish you would because this kind of passive, can't-do-it kind of approach is really not getting their job done for the people that need it. 80% of the respondents. And I was just reading the 1993 comprehensive plan and I reread the 2004 Reed Field Corner Revitalization Report and Plan. And I just skimmed over the 2009 comprehensive plan. And there are a number of very specific measurable activities that can be undertaken. And one last comment, rather than saying we're waiting for Godot to, you know, come and rescue the town, I wish you would take it upon yourselves to reach out and find some people. Have, invite a developer to your meeting and ask them, what are the things that we need to do to make this community an investment opportunity for you? This is, you know, geez, 30 years, 30 years. So.
Ralph, did you want to say something?
Point's well taken. We do have a kind of, I guess, a newly-formatted enterprise committee or?
We do, but that probably would not be the kind of committee that would...
We've discussed it.
Looking for a fit to, but there are properties in town that would lend themselves to this if we had the appropriate town entity to reach out for partners. And that, to my way of thinking, would be the town's role. Because if we were to take on developer status, I think, I think the borrowing factor would have us all living somewhere else in very short order. But there are some opportunities that exist right now. Perhaps what we need to do is explore how a town entity or agency could solicit development inquiries to see whether or not any of these properties might lend themselves to this kind of an enterprise. And I would think that they might, it's not, it's not service-intensive. So whatever development might come from that would be revenue to the town and a benefit to a certain age group as well. So it's a reactive business from my perspective because you have to have places to do this kind of thing. And I'm a little short on long-term history, but from what I understand now, there may be a couple of places that are marketable that, without a lot of heavy-duty development costs, which might lend themselves to this kind of a mixed-use community. So we should certainly explore that. And if that's the number-one priority for use, then that's the direction we should go. But there may be other, there may be other issues, there may be other development issues in terms of revenue and cost to the town that have to be considered as part of it. But it would seem to me that an age-friendly senior community would be a good thing.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
So again, specifically, I hope you will initiate inviting a consultant or an expert investor in this area to come and talk with you and say, here's what you need to do to accomplish this possibly.
Okay, thank you for your comments, David.
Thanks.
Are there any...
I just, that was a follow-up on the age-friendly committee.
Okay, we have a limited amount of time. Is there something else?
Am I at the 10 minutes yet?
I mean, we usually share that 10 minutes among people who want to...
Is there anybody else?
I have a different question.
Yeah.
Just take a minute or two, if you would.
Three points. In reading, in researching the background, the history and the value of comprehensive plans for a community, I was pleased to see that they made a very strong point about the importance and the value of a clear vision statement for the organization. And the importance of that is to inspire and to encourage people to aspire. And I'm here tonight to ask you yet again, urge you to pursue excellence in this area, just as you've done so well in so many other areas of your work. Pursue with excellence the crafting of a clear, compelling, inspiring vision statement for this community that's already piecemealed in the... that's already piecemealed in the first fifty pages of your comprehensive plan. And the reason for that is that any any strategic planning consultant that you would have in to help you fine-tune or improve upon your strategic planning for your you and your twenty-five-hundred customers and your multimillion-dollar budgets would point to JFK's famous moonshot, man-on-the-moon vision statement. Now, the whole thing was a uh speech that he made. But I just wanted to read to you just quickly four lines that I hope you'll take to heart and over the next few meetings uh figure out how you can do something like that for the town of Reed Field. I think it would bring out scores of more volunteers with that kind of inspiration. Some, you're probably all too young to remember this, nineteen sixty-one.
Afraid not, I am.
Here's just four lines.
I wish.
Let's start, let's wrap it up and we'll listen to the four lines, please.
Well, but with feeling, Bruce.
I'm li- I'm listening.
We choose to go to the moon this decade. And not because it's easy, but because it's hard, because it will, and this is something I really want to lay out for you as a leadership team. Because it will serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skills. And I I'm here to tell you, we don't have a clear, compelling, inspiring vision statement for this big organization and it's diminished our energies and skills. And finally, we're unwilling to postpone that and we intend to win. And I think that's a a model, what, you know, consultants would give you that as a model. One last point. Uh you know, I've been doing some work with the Community Development Heart and Soul Program. And in trying to get thirty people to come to the kickoff meeting, I went around across the township and randomly gathered some stories and visions, which is the stuff and substance of that whole program. And I want to read to you quickly four of them. And I've shared them, Bruce, with you and Eric, and I really hope that you allow me to share them with your team members. One, one of them uh that I talked to said, I and my coworkers are embarrassed to have visitors drive through the township because of the way it looked. The second one said, when I told him about the exciting two thousand and four Reed Field Corner revitalization study and recommendations, he's, he said, what the heck? What are they gonna do about the depot? The third one is uh interesting because I made a point of talking to a small business owner. And he told me that, and and I shared with him the the revitalization plan, the the and the comprehensive plan's commitment in writing to support small businesses and specifically with incentives wherever possible. And he said, the town government has never been business-friendly, I don't mind tough and demanding. And he said, I support doing everything necessary for goals such as clean water for all, I support that. But they can be so unhelpful, so slow to meet, let alone to act. And one last one you need to hear because this, I'm convinced, I'm convinced this is very representative of what your twenty-five-hundred constituents are feeling about the gap between these strategic plans that I mentioned to him, summarized for them, and what they're seeing every day. A resident I had talked to here in the corner said, revitalization? She walked out her front door, she looked down the street, she said, the corner is dead. And she wasn't talking about plywood on the Emporium, you know, put that aside. This is not the charming little New England village that I think everybody would hope for and wish for and expect leadership, leadership teams, not just yours, but the thirty years before you to have crafted a vision statement that's inspiring and leads people to aspire to do more. It's just not there, so what to do about it?
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, David.
Leave you with, at your next meeting, please, take a shot at crafting the vision statement that's already piecemealed in your comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to address the select board?
Is it about that specific subject, the age?
Any subject.
Any any subject, this is.
Just a question, um in keeping with the the direction for excellence we're trying to achieve as a community. The connect me.
If you could just introduce yourself, please.
Warren Norris.
Yes, thank you, Warren.
What is the status of the connect me application that we sent in for high-speed internet?
I'll let Bruce take a crack.
Yeah, I mean, at this, at this point, we have, we have a grant that we're working with several other communities um to address um and actually gather information before developing um basically a a solution for towns to look at. The towns that we're allied with are Mount Vernon, Leeds, Vienna.
Fayette.
And Fayette, I believe. You were at the last meeting, right?
Uh, the last one I did not get to, my generator was.
So anyhow, we should be getting, we should be getting a report back that will basically give us the status of internet connectivity uh that we have currently. Uh and then from that, we can develop some solutions to look at. And the way this consultant is working with these towns is to um not develop a co-solution for all of us, although we can do that, but also give us solutions that we may want to go our own way. Um I'm a little bit more in a group bullish on connectivity last mile to every single person in town for high-speed internet versus some people are maybe not doing that last mile thing. So there's a lot of work to be done with that, but that's, that's where it stands right now, it's it's still, uh it's a good working group. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'll I'll be back in ten years to give you the the moon launch.
Yeah, well, I I I actually, I actually, um I don't know the author off offhand, but if you um if you do a web search for the book Fiber, that's was published a couple of years ago, a lot of my thinking and approach comes from from that particular book in terms of, and they have some very unique stories of small towns being quite successful uh with bringing fiber throughout their town. So it's it's an interesting concept. So um are there any other members of the public who would like to address the select board?
Can I ask a follow-up question on the uh internet?
Sure.
Is this entire board uh in favor of doing something regardless of how the other towns go?
Well, I mean, I need to bring back information and give that to this board so we can discuss, I mean, this board, this this board, this board is.
Yeah.
Well.
They voted to apply for the grant.
We voted to apply for the grant.
We all voted to apply for the grant, and we we were. It was gonna be at least a year-long process.
Were represented on the, on on that, in that working group. Um so I think we're going in the right direction.
One last quick question, Bruce. You remember a few months ago, a Mount Vernon resident, Leah, came with such frustration that your board members don't really give feedback when on a lot of important questions and and suggestions? And she, she went to the uh length of forming a not-for-profit organization to track it. I'm all, I've, I've been following your your board for some time now, and I'm always so surprised that when people lay out like I did, big questions, big suggestions, you get silence. Why is that? Can can you just give me a couple of minutes?
No, I actually can't, I I'm gonna end the conversation for um public input.
Can we bring this up next meeting?
Um, we may, uh I set the agenda with Chris.
Yeah.
Um and we have to take a look at what we have for working information and so forth. There's some things that are very time-sensitive that have to get done, whether it's a bid for something or whatever, so.
Right, nice.
I mean, it may be, what you're addressing may uh maybe more doable in a workshop mode, and that's a different type of meeting, so we'll be, we'll discuss that.
Thank you.
You can always call me. Okay, so we'll move on to um, did I get everybody who wanted to speak? Okay, uh we'll move on to considerations of appointments. Um and in front of us, we have the appointment of Ed Sims to the Budget Committee. Um he already appeared uh in front of us for the road committee and wanted to get into, I guess, the bigger set of shoes, um which is more meetings. And so I I'm prepared to uh move that we approve um the non, approve appointing uh Ed Sims to the Budget Committee for a term that would go run through six thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Ed Sims to the Budget Committee for a term of three years. Are there any questions on that, uh appointment, yes?
No questions to comment that Ed did attend the last Budget Committee meeting, uh so he's fully aware of what he's getting himself into. Uh and I think that he'll be a good asset to the to the to the town, so.
Excellent.
Just wanted to report that to you.
All in favor? So the next um appointment application we have is um for Betty Morrow to the school board. The school board informed the town that um Adam Woodford had resigned, I guess he had um some work conflicts. Um and our role in that is to appoint a representative to uh the RSU School Board. Um and that and that would be for the period of time until the next election, that's an elected position, so we're really appointing a temporary, temporary person. Um so that was on the website and Betty uh Morrow, who finished a term uh this last year, has graciously stepped up and um applied to to basically do an additional eight months or whatever it happens to be. Maybe hopefully even decide to run again, who knows?
Until six something?
Six twenty?
Six twenty.
Six thirty, twenty?
Yeah, uh do you want to go up to the microphone just for a second? So this is a new appointment um for us. Are there any questions for Betty or Betty would you like to say anything?
I have no prepared remarks.
No, you shouldn't.
But you have a long history with the school board.
I, yeah, um I I was in education for forty years as a teacher and administrator and I, for the past four years, I have been on the school board.
So you've been on the school board before?
Yes, and I didn't run this past time because I was waiting for someone younger who might be, might be ready to to jump up, and by the time no one did, it was too late for me to run, so. We, we have someone young who did um get elected, so that's great.
Right, but you are stepping in now that there has suddenly been this opening and that's, that's very noble of you, which I think is very kind.
Well, and critical too, because this is when they, just like us, this is when they're starting their budget process.
Absolutely.
Ralph?
Thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
Boards of Ed are some of the most difficult boards and commissions to serve on in any community, especially small towns. And the learning curve is steep and you can get in a lot of trouble when you're green and you don't maybe pay attention to what's going on, so I think it's to our advantage to have a veteran member back in the fold and bless you for doing it.
And yeah, continuity of representation for the town.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Please do.
Actually, David. Uh so, you know, I haven't, I've been on the select board for a while and I just, this is my, beginning of my third term, so. I I I'm interested, how do you think the relationship with the school board and the town works out? Do you think it's a good relationship? Are you open to how things are working so far?
I don't see that the two boards are working that that much together.
Right, they're not, yeah, right, yeah, they don't, they're two separate, yeah.
Except for the time that we come together um at budget time.
Yeah, and that time, I guess, is a little bit.
Yeah, um but I'm not sure, um I I I'm, I have, do not know how that could be changed because you guys are very busy, the school board is busy, and um unless it was representation, someone who came regularly to your meetings or the school board and vice versa, then we might be able to get some.
I guess my my point, not to put you on the spot, which I guess you feel maybe that is, but I I guess it just seems like things, things seem to work out pretty well so far, the the process. The school board, you know, I I know, I I, like I said, you know, I don't, I don't, we don't go to those meetings. The only meeting in last year was my first time with all the, the folks got around and talked about the budget. But it seemed like, um you know, being a part of that process is that, you know, I guess that was what I was sort of.
Yeah, and and I think more important is for the communication between Eric and and superintendent. The superintendent.
Yeah, Jay.
Yeah, Jay.
Yeah, that's all right.
That was, that was a test question.
Yeah, and it seems like that's pretty good to me.
Yeah.
Seems like they do a good job.
As long as that's a good, strong relationship, then, then, that, I mean, that's the place to start.
Yeah.
And that's what they need to be doing.
Excellent, thank you, Betty, I just wanted to answer your question, thank you.
Ralph?
One last question based on your past experience. In a lot of communities, regional boards of Ed invite Budget Committee or Board of Finance members to sit in on their budget development uh process. Just that, I'm new, so obviously I'm asking, does that happen here? And if it doesn't, would it be a welcome opportunity uh without getting into turf wars? If maybe a a budget committee member uh designated to the Board of Selectmen could, could attend these meetings and and have some limited amount of input as the process unfolds?
We've got it covered.
We do.
We have a budget committee member who is on the school board.
Uh huh, well, I'm thinking, no, that's not where I'm thinking, no. I think that that presents some conflict issues, but there ought to be some separation and.
To answer your question, no, that has not been something that we have done in the past.
Is there a reason why?
I don't think anyone has thought of doing it or.
Yeah, I think the best we can do is is, out of this discussion, as Betty notes, that we have mentioned this and if she wishes to take that back, she could. Uh if you do have a comment, you certainly are welcome to make it. I do, you know, in in law, we have different governance
Sure.
um requirements by, in the state domain, so there's, there is a wall there. But I will say that, you know, every single meeting uh that 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 they have um is open. Uh when I served on the school board, we actually had a finance committee that um did the budget and then brought it to the larger committee. They do their budget as a committee of the whole, which is my own personal editorials, I think that's awkward.
It's a little cumbersome.
Um but in any case, that means members need to go to board meetings. The last time they had a public hearing um on a budget item, which was the um the bond that was just passed, I was the only Reed Field resident president. So, please, go to board, go to, go to school board meetings.
I'll just mention that um I work in a school district made up of ten towns and I've asked for many years in a row to have what we have in this school district, where we had the select boards of the four towns come together with the school committee, and it still hasn't happened. They do different things, but it's not an input-seeking, um we'll listen to you and say, this is the school board and this is what we presented, this is how it will affect town X. This is how it will, in the next town, this is how it will affect your town. It's not a back and forth, it's a information, um.
Top-down.
Top-down.
Yeah.
And I I appreciate the fact, I think we get listened to somewhat when we are there, because it's usually most of each select board.
You get, you, you get listened to to very, very much and it is repeated. What happens at that meeting gets repeated many times after, as we're.
But it's a little bit of a pulse on maybe how things are going to come out at the election. And so if everybody's saying, no, 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 then I think you guys. And so if everybody's saying, no, 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 then I think you guys have tried to pull back where you can.
Yeah.
And where you think that's irresponsible, you haven't, and I think we've been very well informed and I think it's a very good process. It, not saying it couldn't be better.
So, I think we should move on to, um.
Nominate.
Call for a vote.
Yeah.
Nominate.
Yeah.
Before she changes her opinion.
Thanks, Betty.
You weren't prepared for that, right?
Yeah, thank you, Betty.
Um, could I have, um, a motion?
I'll move that we appoint Betty Moro to the remainder of the open term ending in June of twenty twenty. Second?
Okay, and, uh, before we discuss, uh, that term would have actually run for three years, but the way state law run, uh, works is you fill until the next election
Only until the election.
and then we'll have a short term, uh, for two years for somebody.
A two-year term.
So, just with that information known, all in favor? Thank you so much. You don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't wish to.
You may, but you don't have to.
You can. It's exciting.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to new business. And, um, we're at twenty zero forty-two. Consider requesting a speed in traffic study for Sturman Hill Road, Beaver Dam Road, Chase Road and Scribner Hill Road. So, um, that's really straightforward.
Very straightforward.
Yeah.
What do you need from us on that?
Uh, if, if you agree with the content and format of this letter, I'd appreciate, uh, an authorization to deliver it to the main Department of Transportation.
I'm willing to make a motion after a question. Um, why have we picked these four roads?
Good question. Um, DOT sets speed limits, uh, based on speed studies. Uh, and those studies are typically requested by municipalities, uh, or done over time if there are accidents or there's a need. Um, of our major roadways, um, that have sizable traffic volumes, uh, these are the four that we haven't actually requested DOT to provide studies and speed limits for. So Sturman Hill, which is a, a quite a busy throughway,
Yeah.
has no enforceable speed limits. Uh, until this study's done and DOT sets a, a specific limit, um, we could put up speed signs that are based on the, the DOT guidance that says rural's forty-five, urban's twenty-five, uh, and we could make it look pretty, but it wouldn't be enforceable. Um, people don't pay much attention to the signs anyway, but, um, we, we could, uh, go through that process and on these four roads, then have enforceable speed limits so that if we ask the sheriffs to say, uh, please come by us at, at eight-thirty in the morning when, when we have peak, uh, speeding, they could come by and enforce that for us. Um, and so it, it makes the whole process, it closes the loop, uh, and allows us to have enforceable speed limits.
So right now, those are all rural roads, so they would all just be posted at forty-five?
If they're posted at all, um, Sturman Hill has, uh, one speed limit sign on the Winthrop side where they had a study done, um, and nothing after that.
Yeah, you can't find a sign on there.
Yeah.
But it is forty-five if it's not posted in the state domain.
Yes.
So they could enforce that if you asked them to?
Well, uh, no, because it hasn't been, it's, it's, it's an advisory speed limit, it hasn't been officially set.
It hasn't had that stuff. Right.
So it's, there's some new ones there.
I know that's how that was written, thank you.
Will the study yield, um, recommendations below the forty-five?
We're gonna take Sheriff and Hill Road and do eighty down the line.
That's right.
Cause it's only a suggestion and it's forty-five.
Well, we, we've had our, our, uh, speed sign there for the past couple of weeks and, uh, the results were, were pretty interesting. We had it set at thirty-five and eighty percent of the vehicles were going faster than that. Um, which is a good indication of that forty-five meat mile hour speed limit, it's probably pretty close, um, but, um.
Maybe you should have said it at forty-five.
Maybe we should have said it at forty-five, but we did have.
You might still have the eighty percent.
Lee's joking, but we had people going sixty and seventy
Yeah.
within a quarter mile of the end of the roadway, um, bonkers, um, but.
I'm not joking, I tell, I know what goes on.
But, um, anyway, I'd appreciate the, the board authorizing that to move ahead.
Do you need a?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to send the letter included in our packet to the Department of Transportation.
Second?
Hey, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Um, I have one question on the motion, um, and I'm gonna vote for the motion, but my question is to the board in general, do we really need to, um, um, do this kind of thing? If Eric is the Road Commissioner, we appoint him at the beginning of the year. I certainly don't see a need to make a motion to, um, to do something of this nature normally.
Could be the sense of the meeting that we support the request.
It could be, and the sense of the meeting, I think, is we do, so.
Yes, well, and I think the way he has it worded on behalf of the Select Board, then he should ask us.
So now I'll take this.
Otherwise, if you just said on behalf of the residents.
I guess my point mainly is, as, as Road Commissioner, I feel very confident that he can, uh, proceed on, on items like that.
Does he need to do?
But, let's vote, all in favor? Thank you. So now we'll move on to, um, twenty forty-three, which is to conduct a review of the emergency operations plan. Are you here for that?
Oh, yes, I am. Yes, you are, how can you?
Several of us just, uh, either did or redid, uh, NIMs training in Augusta, um, the other night.
Thank you.
We, we did the big slideshow.
That, that makes, uh, grants a lot easier to finalize if everybody's NIMs compliant.
That's good. Um, as we review this, um, I wasn't going to do a page by page, I simply had hoped that everyone had an opportunity to read it, it's really in place, I think, fairly well and quite well developed. I did have a.
It's firefighter proof, that, so it should be everybody proof.
Yeah, so you feel pretty good about it.
It is, I mean, that went from when we started, it was that, that, and I think it's down to like that.
Mm-hmm.
And it just gives an overview of what major happened. We were, we kept everybody's job duties the same in an emergency. So if you, like Teresa, she's used to doing financial stuff in an emergency, that's what she does.
Yeah.
So it just, it just made that and then we did the dependencies on it, so we can, and that's a whole idea. I think when we set it up to look at it once a year, just to update the contact list, the contract, you know, anybody, just to keep that all current.
Ralph?
Couple of things, uh, it's detailed stuff. Uh, seven point five point one, the schools listed, do not include the community school on Church Road.
I'll add it.
I would assume you would want that one on there.
Maple Tree, yep. Yeah, that was, uh, that was one of the Maple Trees.
And, uh. The, uh, the transfer station, I think, does not list all of the member towns at this point, I think Fayette's missing.
That's a bad after that had done.
What, what section was that, Ralph?
I think it's still in seven.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look for that.
I should have written that down.
That's okay, I'll find it.
The other thing I have is, is operational and, and concept, uh, there's a lot of talk about Red Cross and, and where shelters might be for mass evac. We don't, to my mind, I read it fairly carefully, we don't specify a number one, number one host for, for mass, mass casualty, mass evacuation.
I've got specifics on it, it's a regional.
Okay, now, do we have a host-community agreement with them? We do, I think that ought to be part of the document, okay?
But we're not really set up, check, set shelters up.
Right, not, no, and we're, we're gonna need help, we're a small town.
Uh, we don't have. That's, that's why we fall, fall under what kind of that EMA sets up. If it's a large thing.
I would like to see that in the document, that says the host.
And it's not, it's not guaranteed it's gonna be at the civic center.
Right, but, but they will be the host community and they will find space for us if we got two hundred people, we gotta put somewhere. It may be.
De- depending. I mean, if, if not, that's when we break into our own thing and we go to the school or we go to council or, I mean, every situation's gonna dictate. It's kind of, that, that whole plan is fluid.
But perhaps then the pecking order ought to be at least loosely defined as to choice one, choice two, if, if, is it?
If, if, if I remember, I, I haven't really looked at that.
Maybe it's in an appendix that wasn't adjusted.
I think it just, it says a shelter.
Yeah, it does.
And that just.
It's page twenty-two, it needs Fayette.
Okay, great, thanks.
It just, it's, it's all fluid, cause you don't know what you're gonna have for a disaster, you don't know where it's gonna be affected.
I understand, it's, it's always the same page.
So it's pretty much.
You're capturing these notes, right, Eric?
I am.
Great.
It's, it's your call, it, to my mind, it just sounds just a little bit vague. And, and the options ought to be at least if this, then this, if this, this is so that it cascades.
But those options aren't set in stone.
No, they don't have to be, but we should, I think the documents.
That's why, that's why.
Can we talk one at a time, please, thank you.
If, if we did anything, it should be, uh, shelter according to whatever the event is.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's always done, done through the emergency management agency in Augusta, working with us. So it's determined at the.
Is that the county or is that Augusta?
Kennebette County.
Kennebette County.
Okay.
So I've got a note to add something, uh, language relating to shelter according to the event and specify the fact that we do have agreements in place and include that as our appendix, does that work?
Shelter determined at the time.
Yep, yep.
Any other board comments?
Yep, um, it says in seven six two that we'll have an annual EOP test. And I know we haven't been doing that, so my request is that we do that.
That's, we put the test in there, so we look at it.
Okay.
Hence, it's on the table right now, and that was the whole point of that, we can do table tops.
Okay, so tabletop is different, so this counts as a run-through here, that everyone has read.
When, we, when we initially did that, that's why we put it like that, so the plan actually gets picked up and we actually look at it
Okay.
and say, jeez, we need to update these because X, Y, Z construction company is out of business.
Yeah.
So we, we update the list, we've got the emergency contact thing that we generate. I think that's mentioned in there and it just gets everybody thinking, jeez, we ought to send, you know, put it in the messenger if you wanna be contacted in the time of emergency.
Okay, because in seven six three, it says establish an annual schedule for, for example, August is the update, September is the test, October, the results are evaluated. So I think it's actually, this plan that's here is actually stating that we're gonna do more than pull it out and read through it. And if we're not gonna do it annually, let's take it out and make it biannual then, you know what I'm saying?
Or, or run through a tabletop.
Once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah, um, and I'm just.
When was the last time we did the tabletop?
This last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was last year?
Yeah, the two years ago, it was cut, um, we had, uh.
I think it was, it was, it was a couple of years.
Was it two years?
I know.
Had to be two. Hey, you haven't done one, have you?
Right, I've never done it and I missed that turn of the day.
Sean, Sean, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well, let's make a note of that, uh, we should probably look into doing a tabletop this year.
And when we were, yeah, when we were at that training a couple of weeks ago, um, I talked to Sean about that afterwards and he says, I was asking him about the drill that Miranda Cook ran and how good I thought it was that they actually drilled, taking the kids off-site, you know, where would the parents go, et cetera, and he said, oh, we learned a whole lot of things that didn't work well. And that's exactly why we do the drill, because we found out that everybody can't go up the same road at the same time.
I'm just trying to protect kids, yeah.
And we, you know, just different traffic patterns at, at your other site and so on. So I think it would be great to do that and, um, we don't meet every other week all year long, so maybe that could be one, in, built into our annual rotation as one of our workshops
Yeah.
in those other months when we're not as busy as we are during budget season.
Thank you.
And I have one other question, which was, Eric, I don't know if it's in the plan because I didn't read it that thoroughly, but, um, at one point, we were supposed to have this Select Board having identification badges, is that still in the plan? Do you know, Lee?
Uh, I don't recall, I think there was a, a suggestion that we should all have them, um, and, uh, maybe work with the school to get the photos taken. I think that had been done way back, yeah.
Right, and the school said that we could do that, I don't know that anyone actually ever went and did it.
I had mine.
You did have yours, okay.
I, I think they've since changed the ID thing, they've gone down that too.
So we should probably follow through on that and it's, you know, it's, you don't need it until you're in Farmington and the leak, the building explodes and three hours later, you have the governor and the emergency management and all these other people standing there and, okay, what's our role? Um, that's your real test, right, who are you?
That, that was the whole idea of the badges.
Right, is, why, why are you allowed to walk through that barrier? Well, I need it, well, prove it, well, when you have your badge, that's, that's your proof.
Sometimes you wanna turn those people around. Who maintains our special needs list and how often is it updated?
That's, we need, Kristen.
Town, town office does it. She does, any times this changes, she goes through and.
So for the most part, you know where these folks are and how to contact them, yeah.
Most, most of the time, I mean, cause it's.
It's a moving target.
On occasion, you know, but Kristen does a real good job about going through and the people that are pass away, cause that gets a little, little weird when you call somebody two months after. And so that works really good, she does a good job.
Any, any other questions for Lee?
Do you feel comfortable with the plan as it is now?
I like the plan as it is.
Good.
It's just, it's normal nonsense, it keeps everybody in, uh, in the same job. When, when something happens, it's gonna be controlled chaos anyway, so, you, you know that. But at least we've got a document we can go to and say, uh, gives you, I can't forget to do that, I mean, it gives you something to go by.
Well, and, and you being the incident commander for the town, to me, it's most important that you are comfortable with what we're doing and that we've included everything that you feel you need to be able to stay as controlled as you can.
So I did have one question under assumptions and, uh, which.
What page are you on?
I'm on, uh, seven point five three.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, that's where we list like water storms, floods and all that. So my thought, uh, on that, um, Lee, is we don't have rail on there. And we do have significant rail through the town and I, and I, and I know probably just like aircraft is probably a federal role there.
The, the, yeah, but.
But do we know who we need to contact? I mean, obviously, uh.
Well, Pan, Panham knows they're gonna train off before we know they got.
They probably do.
Uh, so, yeah, uh, see, we'll know where.
Well, we never know what's on, we never know what's on those trains either, you know.
We'll, we'll know where the plane is before the town knows where the plane is, probably.
Yeah.
The train, yeah.
I, I was just wondering if we should just look at it as one of the items.
In my house.
I mean, yeah, and that's just a given because that's gonna be a localized thing. We get a train derailment and if they don't know about it, it'll cause Panham.
But I think that would be worth.
But if it's a derailment with add, hazard is waste and becomes a whole nother level.
And, 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 and it becomes kinda funny that way, but.
I think it would be worth adding to that list of assumptions because not every town has a railroad track that goes through it. And so that is a.
I'm surprised that's not in there.
It's a little bit more unique, so I think.
It seems, seems how the city I.
I, I hear the whistle most nights, that's why I mentioned it.
But, yeah.
You all hear it.
Uh, I'm weird, that's weird, seems how the city I stole that from, I know it has all kinds of trains in it.
Um, so, we've captured.
No, you are developing the wheel.
Yes, so we've captured some comments to follow up on.
Yeah.
Um, anything in conclusion, Eric or Lee?
One, one, one thing, they have my cell phone number, which is a four one two seven seven nine.
Okay.
My landline is six eight five zero zero five one.
Thank you, Chris.
Zero zero five one, alright.
So we, we, we got the cell phone, we don't wanna get you, don't have a way.
That's right.
Well, that's the way you'll get me, if there's cell service.
If it's a cell phone.
But of course, most of our land.
If it's a big disaster, good luck getting through on cell phone.
Well, and most of our landlines are now internet, so they may be down also, because they're not really landlines.
And after two days, the battery power's gonna be gone.
Unless you have a generator.
That's when you need the towers.
That, that's when I hope my five hundred gallons of propane lasts a long time.
Seven days.
Just keep it in the bank, okay?
Yeah.
So I guess my only request at this point would be that sometime before the end of June, we schedule a tabletop on, on an off-meeting night, so it's a workshop night and it doesn't have to be a two-hour event. And it should not be on a Tuesday fires night, fire department drills, so.
But we'll work with Lee to, uh, figure out when that should be.
Yes, the good thing about it is you get your box, whatever that is down here, I hope.
Where is our box, Eric?
It's upstairs, I didn't wanna suck it out of your stuff.
See if the radio, see if the radio batteries are corroded and.
Okay, so upstairs is a big place.
See if the sticky notes don't stick no more.
Yeah, there's not a monthly maintenance log on it?
Markers, markers are all dried out, I don't want to.
I think it's, Kristen, isn't it on one of the shelves on the stage? We, we, so we should.
Yeah, no, that's where, it's, it's upstairs on the, it's upstairs on the stage, so.
Right, I, because when I had the Christmas decorations down, I seem to remember that that box is there and Robert was pulling it out saying, don't touch that!
Everything is. Everything centers on Christmas, doesn't it?
Do we have a cam radio?
Um.
We, we don't have, you guys here don't have a ham radio, but there's a mobile up there with a power supply and then Tyler will hang up the window, so.
When I bought my house, the ham radio.
So a ham licensed guy could go in here and run it.
Have you learned how to run it? Yeah?
No.
You should.
I should, yes, cause when we went to that thing.
We need a good ham operator, with a ham radio operator.
That is a great need.
I'll have to, yeah, because they said that's the way they'd contact you.
We, we used to have a, we used to have a slug of ham amateur radio guys here in town, I think that.
They don't break.
You wanna look at it?
Yeah. I wouldn't know the first thing about that old stuff.
I don't know anything about it.
But I bet if you contact Sean, is it Goodwin?
Yeah, then, then they can tell you.
It, come back DNA, he would tell you someone who would be happy to come tell you.
Yeah.
And you can do a license search too, if a woman in town has permits and all that.
Bo, bo, yeah, there's a, there's a few on there, not like they used to be. There used to be a slug, now you go on there and they're all.
Yeah.
A ham radio.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was very proud to be representing Reedfield at that meeting and know that we have a great plan and there were a couple of other towns there that didn't seem to really know exactly what they had. They had different things, but not everyone in, who was there knew about everything they had, so I'm really happy that we're doing this, so thank you all.
Thank you. Um, great, so we'll make those updates. Um, we'll continue, uh, on twenty zero forty-four, which is to conduct a review of existing and proposed ordinances for the twenty twenty town meeting. Um, as you know, I, uh, and from our select board's goal setting, um, we do try to review some ordinances and we do know that some of those ordinances will be forwarded to voters, uh, in June, so, um, part of the reason to have this, uh, discussion tonight is to make sure we capture those that we think would be going to voters, um, and begin, uh, whatever work they need to do on those, cause they would need to have a hearing and and so on and so forth. Can you kinda just very briefly give us an update on what the timeline is? Timeline consideration is on that, Eric?
Sure, yeah, so basically from the start of November, um, we have about four months to wrap, uh, wrap up the policy portion of, of the, the, um, of the warrant, uh, which means that, um, you would go from, um, having a shortlist of items you'd like to work on through, um, the ordinance development process, first and second readings, uh, and then having, um, discussion at our public, uh, public, um, meetings that we have, um, prior to a, a, a secret ballot vote. Um, and this, the, the fact that we are now secret ballots for the town meeting does change the dynamics of how this information is communicated to some extent, but, um, the timeframe right now really does give us just about four months, uh, start to finish to, um, do that policy work. Uh, and so essentially the end of, um, um, end of March, uh, the board should have those ordinances, uh, ready to go to legal review.
And does that mean March thirty-first?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so three thirty-one. Finished. Finished language for legal review.
Yes, and actually, if you go, uh, down a couple pages, just hook myself, um, go down a couple pages, you have the, um, uh, budget and warrant process schedule, uh, that we were looking at in conjunction with, um, scheduling for the, uh, the select board meetings. And, uh, we have the, uh, deadline for warrant review, um, or ordinance submissions is March sixth. Uh, and that's for, uh, things like, um, citizens, uh, or referendum questions, uh, that's an important deadline. And then, um, deadline for legal review is actually March twenty-fifth, so, um, I would put that, um, as really the end of the process, uh, so that we can then discuss a fully vetted ordinance with the, um, with the voters.
Discussion.
Well, I said I was gonna do the, um, food ordinance.
Right.
So I will have that done.
So I, I, that's awesome. But so I would like to say we need to set a date for when we're gonna have these done and bring them back because done and done are two different things to give to people.
Well, we have to have it ready for legal review by the end of March, so we have to have two readings before that, correct?
Right.
It's recommended, it's not a requirement, it's recommended.
So we're looking by the end of February?
It's, it's really up to you, but yeah, I would think that, uh, if you had, uh, readings in December or December, January, and February, depending on the the complexity of the ordinance, uh, that, that would, that would work pretty well.
Cause you wanna allow time for revisions and for public to make suggestions and feedback.
Yeah, perhaps a workshop, um, the marijuana, um, ordinances that we're gonna be potentially looking at, um, would be one that you probably wouldn't just do a reading, you'd wanna have a full workshop on. Shortlist of things that either I've noticed, the select board has set as goals, or, um, that, excuse me, have come up from other staff members, like small revisions to the animal control ordinance. Um, uh, this is kind of a wish list, certainly not all of this stuff can or should, uh, come on the warrant, uh, at any given time, so.
Right, and, and, um, I mean, I'm, I feel fairly strongly about not putting a lot of ordinances in front of voters, uh, in June. Um, I mean, we need to make rules where we need to make them. We do know there will be a land use ordinance update, cause there's one every year.
Annual.
What did it, what, excuse me?
Annually.
Yeah, annually, um, they do that as a matter of course. Um, but what we don't wanna do in my mind anyhow is have a, a huge number of ordinances, so it's overwhelming. So prioritize if we will in our mind over two or three years, is kind of the way I roll forward with this.
Well, at the last solid waste meeting, solid waste and recycling committee meeting in October, we discussed and Eric, as transfer station manager, suggested very strongly that we revise that ordinance um, for this year because of the new operations manual that's been put into place. Um, there are conflicts now between that operations manual and the, I wouldn't say conflicts, but they are not, it's not as up-to-date.
Inconsistencies, yeah.
Things that we just noticed with the EOP, uh, cert, and like town names aren't all in there because we've added, they add in, um, so, I think we're going to see that.
Okay, that's not on the shortlist, so that's.
No, yeah, thanks for reminding me of that.
It's not, it's not, but that, but it's something that we really need to follow through on.
Yeah.
Um, because that's a fairly significant, uh, financial piece of the town and where it involves three towns, I think it's really important that we have all of our ducks in a row.
Do we wanna keep it to like four with the, knowing the land use is a revision?
Well, the food one has been put off for a number of years. I think it's important to follow through on that.
Well, you have to do the transfer station and the food, and what about the marijuana?
Well, and I think marijuana is the only other one we really have.
The, the traffic ordinance, um, actually does not go to voters.
That's right, that's right.
By state law that, uh.
Yeah, can do that anytime we get ready.
Yeah, the, the select board does that.
And broadband isn't going to be there because we won't be ready.
Yeah.
Well, broadband wouldn't necessarily be an ordinance.
Right. Um, so I think those are the only ones there. The others are.
Land use, local food, marijuana.
Right, the others are plans, like a solar energy plan, um, but we already took that.
We're authorized to do that.
Already. The library building and the fire station building were done by the town, um.
Okay, I think with that input, um, I will, uh, work with Chris and, and Eric to develop appropriate, uh, workshopping on, on, on these items.
And Chris, I think you were going to take other ones that were all, cause there have been a number made in the state for the food ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
And we were going to just take the best and.
Best of everybody.
Make it.
I've got a couple of great examples we can, um.
Make it Reedfield specific.
So we're gonna do land use food and marijuana.
And potentially solid waste, yeah.
In the, so, in this transfer station.
Right.
And I would, I would say these are potential, okay, so.
Chris Land use.
Yeah.
The first, the first time we look at them, we may decide that, uh, this one needs a little bit more work than what we're, what we wanna bring forward this year, or it, uh, something else might rise up to, um, status of, we really do need to address that because something came up.
And Eric, um, from the solar committee, um, I know you were talking about a need for uh, maybe a different approach from the town or a very specific approach, but I think they were all going to fall under the land use ordinance, is that correct?
Well, pro, you're talking about individual solar, not the town's project.
Uh, you know, for solar, yeah.
Well, individual, but also
Well, yeah, I mean.
To incorporate for non, non-residential use, so being
Right. Exactly, yeah.
A business meant to generate electricity to sell, not for anyone to use who lives in town.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But that was all gonna come in under the land use ordinance, correct?
We, we tabled it at the solar meeting.
Okay.
Uh, because we, we just, we got into a, a great deal of discussion about, uh, how the new state law is probably, um, not our friend in terms of developing the town's solar project.
Yeah.
Uh, we still have some more discussion and work to do in regards to that, um, but I'm not sure we're gonna be able to pursue a PPA.
For us.
For us. But what was also brought up, and this was not really, uh, why the solar committee was put together, was that particular issue. And Eric, uh, thought, well, those same heads are together, well, why not take a quick look at that and it's apparent that really the land use or folks should look at it.
Okay, so that's not an additional ordinance, it would be under the land use revisions.
Absolutely.
Right, they would, they would add that in just like you would add in windmills.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, or I guess a good example for the town of Reedfield would be, we addressed towers a few years back.
Yes.
So this would be kind of a similar thing. How do we incorporate that, uh, rule-wise into, uh, the town?
And then there, my last point, whatever, um, the cannabis issue, cause we're gonna call it cannabis, right?
I, that's the appropriate name.
Okay. I was just.
The marijuana miles in Manchester.
Yeah, so it's not here in Reedfield, we're very.
The green mile.
Um, is that still a hot button issue, so to speak, or has that issue, that part of the cannabis ruling, rule-making, has that been taken care of right now?
Um, the, the, nothing's really changed on the, on the state level, um, they're still working to, um, keep two separate programs, one for, uh, recreational and one for medical. Uh, so the, the issue that we had originally faced with medical cultivation is being addressed, um, and a little bit more broadly, um, uh, by the planning board and it will be addressed through the land use ordinance for, um, cultivation of cannabis and marijuana generally and broadly, uh, with a specific focus on the, um, special circumstances around, um, uh, medical cultivation. That is kind of in limbo after the state put their regulations through. Um, uh, so the, the, um, planning board's working on those, those changes right now. Um, really a broad one that involves industrial agriculture or heavy agriculture, um, which greenhouse operations tend to be. So, um, it was actually a good, good, good experience for us and for them, uh, so, uh, it's not, um, a, 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 a fire issue, but, uh, they will have something ready in conjunction with the June town meeting. We originally thought that we would wanna have a special town meeting, but, um, the pace and the need both kind of point towards June, so.
And that's in the land use ordinance again.
In the land use, so, so, so dealing with cannabis in general.
In the land use ordinance, yes.
It's not that aspect.
Well, what we would have to decide is what, what we would want our ordinance to cover. Um, right now, um, the whole licensing for retail process has begun, I believe.
Yes.
Um, licensing, um, I believe submissions have been made, but the state has actually said they don't know when and how long it's gonna take them to process those. So I, I have no feel for that, whether they have five hundred applications or fifty and whether they're gonna take, um, three months or six years.
So in terms of the town taking action on an opt-in question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be in a position to do that in June.
We probably are not going to be, but I think, um, it's worth at least having, um, the discussion perhaps on a workshop basis as we get into, you know, what is it we really wanna address in this town and, and hear from some residents in regards to it. And so, you know, we may start something that we, we say we'd like to, to adopt in twenty twenty, but we might say that's gonna be in a follow-up town meeting. Uh, and, you know, we can put items on the ballot in November if we wish to. Um, I dislike doing that. I like town meeting to be kinda separate, but if we had a hot button issue, it's a presidential year, it'd be a good turnout, so it'd be very representative of the town. So I wouldn't have a problem doing that.
So is both medical and recreational opt-in for the towns according to state law currently?
Not medical, really. Medical is, um.
I think they're separate.
It's just adult use is the only, only thing. And the update is so that you would allow the revenue sharing.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
The recreational sales, the, the testing, the extraction facilities, the cultivation of recreational.
Right, right.
Those are the, the key issues that we would look to opt in for, and I, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear that those are two separate issues. The land use, things we're considering, really, um, focus on the medical side, but would have an impact because a lot of the factors that are existing under the medical, um, program would be similar for the recreational cultivation. Uh, you wanna have a certain setback. If you wanna have a lot of plants, they should be indoors and things like that, um, so.
But opting in to adult use is completely separate of this issue here.
Completely separate.
Well, adult use, let's, let's be explicit about this, that adult use in terms of the business end of it, because marijuana is legal in the state of Maine, um.
Right.
For recreational use, people are allowed to have a certain number of plants, so, you know, having a line of mic folks coming up to a microphone saying, I don't want it in my town.
Right, that's.
We cannot do that. State law's already done.
Yeah, it's too late for that.
That's right, but we can make, we can make good decisions, uh, for the town about businesses.
Right, right, well, we're talking the business in that.
Um, we can encourage businesses if we want to, so, you know, that's.
Right, and so if we don't make an ordinance, none of that for adult use will take place in this town because we would have to make an ordinance to opt in to allow sale, development, extraction, et cetera.
But I think it's better to address things.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I think a workshop has to be done for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then a public hearing.
Absolutely.
And I think, as Ralph said, I think that would be wise to take place during this fiscal year, even if we're not going to put an ordinance forth because that's that important data gathering and letting people have their voice be heard.
Yes.
Um, and since the state is dragging its feet again.
Still.
Um, it, I, I think it shows that we are trying to do the best we can and being prepared for when the state has finally got things in order.
Thank you. Um, we'll go ahead and wrap up that discussion then and move on to twenty zero forty-five, which is to conduct a review of municipal investment policies. And so Eric, I'm gonna just hand this off to you to, to kinda describe what we have for an investment policy and then have some discussion among board members in regards to this.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we're not necessarily, um, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
See you next time.
Yes.
Service coat, is that your coat?
Uh, and I'll reach out to you about the, uh, so, um, the broadband committee if you have interest.
Okay, so since this was signed in twenty ten, I'm assuming that was our last decision.
There's so many signatures on it.
Yes, so we actually have two investment policies, one for town funds broadly and one for our different portfolios that relate to trust funds. Uh, and they are managed differently and actually, um, you know, I'll, I'll say that, um, our town, um, general funds, our, our, uh, reserve accounts and all that is less managed. Uh, those right now are kept very, very safe in FDIC insured, uh, banks and we have a sweep account, uh, and we get about a half a percent interest. Uh, and that's very safe, but I think that it's time for us to look at it and do better. Um, and I've been wanting to, to pursue this for a while, other projects, other needs have come up, uh, whether it's capital work or, um, personnel or whatever. Uh, but I think that, um, I, I'm glad we're having this discussion, I'll put it that way, because we, we can and should do better. Uh, and, um, the other, um, investment, and, and so we have guidelines that are related to state and federal requirements on how we invest our money as a, as a government entity. Uh, we have different criteria, uh, our tolerance for risk and our ability to take risk is quite a bit less than what, uh, exists in the private sector. So you can invest in a high, high-risk stock, we can't, we shouldn't. Uh, and so, um, in both of these ordinances, or excuse me, both of these policies, that, that is reflected. Uh, we want to be responsible, we want to have a conservative, uh, approach that, uh, puts a little bit of money in cash, a lot of money in, in, uh, say things like bonds, uh, and some money in, um, in moderate growth, uh, type accounts, uh, and there is a pretty big range on what those things can be. Um, uh, kind of related to this that we'll probably talk about a little bit is, uh, the retirement investment. uh the retirement investment for um municipal staff, um, which you know, it is is separate, but related in the extent that it it is a type of investment and something we should be looking at regularly. Um, so I'll back up and just um say that our, um, I'll start with the first one in the packet here, the trust uh portfolio. Uh, this we do have managed through Canobec Wealth Management, uh, and we have, uh, I think around two hundred and fifty thousand. I'm not entirely sure of the exact balance right now. Uh, but one reason we're reviewing the policy uh is because that I have invited uh Sam Tippett, who is managing that those funds for us, uh, through Canobec Wealth Management, uh, to come to our December meeting to give a full report out. Uh, and I thought it'd be wise for us to to look at this policy before we have that meeting with him. Um, to consider whether or not we want to look at this a little bit differently, because uh, things have kinda turned on their heads in the last um six months to a year, uh, and those things that that um bonds, for example, are 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 now opposite of what they should be, uh, as I understand it, and our portfolio guidance may be limiting, uh, in that we've invested very he- very heavily in bonds, uh, and we're not doing very well, uh, when we could be doing a little bit better with more um, more of our assets in things that would be higher growth. And um Chris understands this better than I do, and I certainly know that Sam Tippett does, but um, I just wanted to give the board a chance to take a look at this and see if there were preferences for how we approached uh investing in both of these areas, uh, with respect to our trust funds, which really we're managing money on behalf of other entities, uh, other donors, uh, and have the ability to pull off sometimes just the interest, sometimes it's the principal as well. But um it's a different investment, uh, than for, than 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 we will have for our um our general government uh reserves and checking accounts.
I guess I'd like to, since I know Chris has a lot of knowledge in this, Chris, as you're looking at this, do you have any suggestions as to the percentages, like are we way out of whack?
Well, bond, you're very heavy in bonds, fifty to seventy percent, and as Eric says, bonds are not paying well. They haven't been. If the market goes up, bonds go down.
Right.
So really, uh, you know, the issue comes down in my mind, okay, it's, you know, we can always play around with these percentages, and you know, we are governments, so we would vote on a policy, um, and you know, we can't really, we we've gotta figure a way to be nimble, but yet have the kind of governance that um maintains a guideline that's uh uh serves the taxpayer well. So that's kind of, and I'm not exactly sure how we accomplish that. Um, but I'm kind of open to hearing more suggestions in regards to that.
Well, there's a whole host of mutual funds out there that, they call them income funds, because they pay income.
Right.
You get dividends, but they're not risky.
Because you're. And you're meant to leave the um, the balance there.
Yeah, like if you have these mutual funds in your portfolio, you're not gonna see them go up and down, up and down, but you're gonna see dividends come through, so you're gonna get paid.
What is the size of that portfolio?
Two hundred and fifty.
I think it's right in that range, yeah, two, two, two fifty.
So these are like the cemetery funds and so on and so forth?
It it's a combination of several different trust funds, yeah, yeah, some of them have three thousand dollars, some of them have
Quite a number, yeah.
Uh, I I think probably as little as a couple thousand, some of them have a hundred thousand in them.
Okay.
Um, so it's a, it's quite a range.
And you know, I did mention to you that Fidelity has a money market fund that pays almost two percent.
Yes, which is about four times what we're getting from our bank account right now.
And and they're, they're um insured just the same as a bank is. And it seems a shame to have like two percent, did you say you, I mean, uh, half a percent?
Half a percent.
Yeah, half a percent.
Half a percent, yeah.
Um, we switched all of our clients over to this money market because it did pay so much.
So we would be looking to change the, I don't think anybody really wants to keep more cash or money market, um, money, yeah, money market funds, zero to ten percent, but probably maybe even flip-flop the fixed income and equities.
Well, you don't really wanna go equities, um, we might have to spell out, cause equities could mean stocks.
Right, the 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 mutual fund can have a mix of.
But we do have limits on that.
Mutual funds are a mix of, but you have no ETFs here either, um.
So.
So maybe we need another two categories added in.
Yeah, yeah, ETFs are very popular now, and it's a, it's.
Which is what for other people who don't know that term.
It's a um traded, it's not a mutual fund, but it's mu- multiple stocks into one.
Okay.
It's a, it's a basket stock, right?
Yeah, yeah, and we, they trade like securities, not mutual funds priced at the end of the day. Um, ETFs, you buy and sell, and it takes two days to sell.
Okay.
Ralph?
Uh, I I got a couple of problems with, uh, if I'm looking at Appendix A and I, and I'm seeing.
I don't think Appendix A is for the trust fund one.
No, it's just.
It's for the.
It's for the general, it's, it's been a general saving.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm just. I don't, I don't know what main state statute says, but uh it seems to me that any municipal funds that we have outside maybe of specialty funds like cemetery trust funds and so forth should be a hundred percent risk averse, and they need to be in government-backed securities. And look, it just, you're talking about, you're talking about uh up to thirty percent in stock financial institutions, certainly with no more than five percent in any single non-main bank. Uh, I, I understand that the risk is probably minimal, but uh, you know, and you're talking about buying corporate bonds here, and allowing, allowing that to happen. Uh, I think there's, I think there's more risk here than we should be, than we should be willing to assume, especially when you're, when you're looking at the, at the percentage cut that's going into these things.
These are maximums too.
Yeah, maximums.
And these are more risky investments that they're referencing, so.
You're saying that these are permitted, but that isn't necessarily what we are using.
And and I just, that's right, yeah, I think it's just broad-based policy statement, I think it's bad policy to to do anything that has has equity-related risk attached to it with town money, other than specifically defined funds where you want to more conservatively, but try to aggressively grow dollars. And in that category, I would put cemetery trust funds, I don't know what else you would do, but uh I wouldn't put uh undesigned fund revenue in any of these things. I would be unfortunately buying government bonds and building a bond ladder in the absence of a short-term investment fund that the state of Maine might have, where you could park your money and draw it out electronically as needed.
You don't have it invested in anything, do you, Eric?
No, right now, it's just, it's all FDIC insured baskets, it's all um, all between Camden National and um.
It's in a bank, right?
Camden Scog.
So they're buying bonds for?
No, no, no.
They're they're a sweep account, it's just a sweep account, it's just.
It's a checking account.
Yeah, that's, that's it, yeah, yeah, that's what they have.
Okay, so.
So so what Chris was addressing would would be, um, a still um insured account, um, but it's a money market account that's giving you a, 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 a two percent, so, so we should.
Better return, as long as it's insured, and and you have flexibility to withdraw, given our cash needs over the course of a fiscal year,
Right, yeah, right.
and you're not gonna, and you're not gonna be penalized for withdrawing.
No, yeah, it's it's just a money market, it's it's dollar for dollar.
We'll have to math this.
Yeah, okay. So you can, you can, you can put it in and take it out as needed.
Yeah, you can even have a checkbook.
That's right, actually you can, yeah.
Um, so I would look to ask before Sam, I don't know, Sam can come and tell us. I guess what you're, oh, I'm baffled. I think you were hoping that maybe we could revise or say we wanna leave it as is before Sam comes to give us a report out?
Well, just to have the discussion, so that when we, when we talk with Sam, we will have some thoughts and ideas, uh, because what 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 our managed account is right now, and I'm referring just to the um, the the trust portfolio that we have.
Right.
Um, it is a ma- we went last year, uh, in April, from a um, a fixed, um, just program, I won't say program base, but um.
Non-managed?
Non-managed to a managed account, and so Sam has been very, um, um.
Active?
Well, it's a very active, um.
That has a cost associated with it.
Yeah, we we do pay a premium for the transactions and for it, for the oversight, uh, but he's working basically with a formula that um fits within our criteria, but also um is provided to him by the investment company, um, which is um.
Voay?
It's I N, no, it's not I N G, um.
The Voay is now I N G.
Yeah, okay, I think I think that's.
So Voay, I N G is now Voay.
Think that's what it is, but um, in any event, he he um, he's working within this policy. He looks at this policy and says, okay, or this policy, um.
And within his own company, they're not gonna give him the latitude to make too much change.
And within his, within his own company, yeah.
Right.
His hands are tied.
So really, the, if we wanna change how we're investing, it needs to start with, with this.
This. And so do we wanna get, where I'm going is, do we want to get his take on what would be a better spread, and Chris's take on that, and maybe some other input? And then make a decision based on the experts giving it, because.
I also think you have to decide if you want him to continue to manage it, because he's managed it, but we haven't made any more money.
Exactly, yeah. And here's, here's my issues with with the, specifically the pension plan. The level of service in terms of the outreach to the employees, uh, and and monitoring their needs from from my perspective has been negligible. I I, they get a failing grade. And the other thing that that bothers me is that as the fiduciary for these plans, we have legal exposure, and while we don't have a lot of money under management, a number of large nonprofits have been sued for basically the same reasons that we would be exposed. Brown University, Duke, Columbia, uh, we haven't reviewed fees, we don't benchmark the in, the performance of the investment vehicles in the record keeper, and we don't periodically meet and review performance, which we should be doing annually. Uh, and if we're not doing those things, I don't think we have a lot of legal exposure. But I think we're we're falling down in terms of guaranteeing the maximum benefit to our employees that we're, that we're providing a pension benefit to, to make sure that they have the options available to them to maximize their choices, and that their choices within a range will be good ones.
Um, you know, this kinda comes back to that school board discussion we were having a little earlier where things were done as a committee of the whole on their fiscal budget versus a subgroup working on it. And I'm wondering if we're at the point where we ought to have one or two board members work with Eric and perhaps see if we can recruit maybe a CPA volunteer and our treasurer
And our treasurer.
to have a committee to kinda get back to us with some thoughts on what would make these, and and, you know, obviously, the entire board as a whole would then review.
Would have the blessing.
Well, have input too, I think.
It's a policy, so we would.
But I'm I'm wondering if that's the direction we should go in.
I think that would be.
We've done subcommittees before, we haven't had one for a while, um, but maybe that's what we wanna do in in regards to this. I'm really open to doing that. Um, I would probably think it would be two board members, maybe, maybe somebody from the budget committee would be um, uh, willing to, to take it to this.
Somebody within expertise.
Right, and and I would hope it would not be a heck of a lot of work in in the sense of um, basically building a framework for some s- better decision-making.
Create a new structure and then build the plans to fit.
Yeah.
Right, and then you can, then you can look at what we have currently and see if that fits into your new framework.
Well, and then.
Do you need someone managing it, or do you just need something out there?
Well, or do we uh need to take the management of it and put it out to competitive bid?
I think ultimately that's where we would end up going, from my perspective. Uh, I think we need to shop for a new record keeper, given the performance of Voya to this point. Uh, and if you're going to shop it, you, I think, even though we have some depth, uh, when you, when you get into that kind of a thing, uh, you need a contract player to advise you and vet, so that you you have a backstop in terms of the credibility of your decision. And then on an ongoing basis, if you choose, you can, you can retain the services of a per, of a firm to do the benchmarking uh, of the options within the record keeper's portfolio, to say, get that one out of there, offer this one, and make sure that the outreach to the uh, to the employees is there, so they'll know what to do to their best advantage.
So with that all in mind, um, is it the uh direction of of the select board to appoint a subcommittee? And if so, um, would there be a couple of members who'd wanna serve on it? And um let myself and Eric have a conversation about what other kinds of individuals would be good to serve on that committee as well, so we can maybe reach out to, and I think the treasurer's a good idea. Um, but I also think if we can get a couple of local citizens who have some expertise, um, that might be of value as well, and I can think of a couple of names too.
I think having it broadly based is good, especially given some, light of some of the comments people made during our earlier session. Some people may not be feeling like we're inclusive enough, so that will help.
Mm-hmm, and but to keep the working group reasonably sized, so.
Yeah, I don't think you would.
Yeah, seven or less.
It's hard.
Seven or less is.
You get, you get too large, you can't schedule them.
Yeah, exactly, um.
So if that was a motion, I'm in, I'm in favor.
But I would think, I would think of this. Okay, it wasn't a motion, I I think actually we can just kinda do this by
I'm in favor.
consensus, and I'm looking for, uh, there are a couple of board members who are interested.
I'll do it.
And I would be happy to do it as well.
I think those are our two, our experts in here, so are are we happy with that?
Yes.
Okay, so um, what we'll do is, for the next meeting, I will develop the uh, just a working criteria for what that group will look like, and already knowing that we have a couple of select board members that are ready to jump on onto it, how's that sound?
That sounds great, can I make a a sort of related suggestion?
Yes, please do.
Um, I'm not trying to be a knee-jerk reactor, but I think David brought up a valid point, and I'm wondering if it would just be all right with the board at large if Eric and Ralph had a meeting themselves to just talk about um where we might go with the suggestions that David brought up? I mean, he has been working with the Orton Family Foundation, the age committee, the age friendly committee has asked, you know, people, what do you think, what do you need, and we've talked about it before, maybe that would be a way to maybe get something going, without the whole board having to try and address that from a ground point of view.
What are you doing in your spare time?
Well, I mean, um, we we had discussed it during the agenda-setting meetings, and I'm sorry David's not here, that that we were gonna be talking about the comprehensive plan goals next meeting. Um, and part of that is a brother discussion about the update of the comprehensive plan.
That's next meeting, not this.
That's next, it's this December, yeah.
Perfect, let's do it then.
So so I mean, it's already in process, and I, I can understand his his frustration around things not happening quickly, but they don't always happen quickly, and you know, I also have a little bit of concern about a narrative coming, especially if you're looking at the Orton Family Foundation approach, which is to bring the community together to create a vision, and not have it be a top-down vision created by the select board of the municipal officers. So there's a conflict, I think, between the approach and the message I'm getting from the Orton Family Foundation, really how I'd like to see community development happening. Um, I think we should be doing a comprehensive plan update, reviewing the results of that, and using that to develop a mission statement and a goal, much as David said, there's the first fifty pages of the current ordinance, uh, current current comprehensive plan is littered with good ideas. Um, I think that unfortunately, we need to go through that process again and revise it, make sure we still have the right read from the community, uh, and then come to a um inspirational goal of landing on the moon, because you know, we landed on the moon because we had the resources available, we had the technology, we had the scientists, we had the the money.
Well, and there was a desire.
And there was a desire, and we don't necessarily.
Oh, we had some pressure from a very nasty country on the other side, yeah, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I don't think Reed Field, I mean, I just have my own opinions, but I don't. Times have changed financially and community-centered wise in the last thirty years. You look at how Augusta has grown, I'm not sure it's reasonable to expect all these little. I'm not sure it's reasonable to expect all these little surrounding towns to have offer those same services. And just because they're in the comprehensive plan doesn't mean that they're still really valid. It doesn't mean they were bad ideas, but it doesn't mean that they're necessarily ideas we need to put in place just because they're listed there.
Yeah.
So I'm happy with what you just said on and I take back what I said and I'm just unhappy, thank you.
Let's go ahead and move on and we want to.
Get me to go away.
No, that's not true. We wanna consider setting the schedule for future board members. This is a good timely discussion.
Board meetings, not members.
Why not?
Okay.
So in your package, you have. Excuse me, the the budget and warrant process schedule. Okay, and so some select board meetings are noted there. As they pertain to just the budget piece. And of course, we always do a budget update pretty much through the budget process, whatever meetings we have. So I'm thinking after January, we need to move to two board meetings a month.
After January.
And uh excuse me, starting in January probably.
Our next meeting, for those keeping score at home.
Right.
December ninth.
Right.
Okay. December.
And that is Monday.
And when we when we fix, yeah, when we fix that meeting date, excuse me, fucking funny. The idea was to try to wrap up December business. We just don't really get much done around. Later, the latter latter part of December. And so in January. I would think we would move to twice a month with some of those perhaps being workshops rather than full meetings. And we can kinda craft out that schedule in conjunction with the budget schedule. And for predictability sake, do we wanna say something like we wanna do the first and third, second and fourth, or or something of that nature? Is that more useful?
You should put a calendar in here, go on every other.
I'm always like.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I have a proposal.
Please do.
Okay.
So here's your proposal.
Ladies and gentlemen.
A man with a plan.
Go ahead.
Are you on the calendar or on the list?
Um I'm really on the calendar, but the the calendar reflects the list. So the list shows the budget committee meetings and then which the budget committee has reviewed and they like, they're they're happy with it. This meets our timeframe, our constraints for state law. There's a lot of stuff going on here and going into this. So the 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 meshing between the budget committee and the planet and the uh excuse me, the select board, that happens on this on this list here. And then on the calendar, I I've tried to reflect as best I can, the. The the select board meetings that would need to happen in order to support that and also offer opportunities for. An additional independent select board activity.
That would March, you got it's four meetings.
It's only three in March. Oh, there's the budget committee too, yeah, so yeah. But March is the 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 end game, so it's a it's a tough month.
Okay, so what I don't have is I don't have a colored copy. That's that's the problem.
That's part of the problem.
Yeah, I'm looking at a blank calendar and thinking.
Just look. He's like, what what plan, what schedule vacation?
Okay, so what's the fourth one? Is it the twenty-sixth?
The sixth.
Six.
January, can can we, what a radical idea. Can someone read off what they are? January sixth.
Is a select board.
Okay, hang on one second.
Six and twenty-one.
And one twenty-one.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Six and then you got sixteen is budget, thirty is budget, and twenty-one is select board.
Yeah, I just want six and twenty-one. Just us, I'm I love the budget committee and all that they do.
Okay, but then select board is two, three, and two eighteen.
Six and twenty-one, hang on, two, three. Okay, hang on.
But why is two twenty-seven start, Eric?
That is start because that's a joint select board and budget meeting. Talk about capital improvements.
So it's two, three, two eighteen, and two twenty-seven, that's the off night, that's a Thursday, CIP.
Two, three, yeah.
And then he has us suggested, I'm not saying scheduled. Four, three, four.
And twenty-six.
Now, why would that be on a Wednesday?
Uh what's which one is the on Wednesday?
March fourth.
March fourth, that so that is a that that one is a also should be start, but that's a best guess. That's just a guess at when the joint school board and school select board meeting might be.
Okay, so that's not a select board.
So that's CSD select board.
That's kind of a gray area.
I'm actually not available on that date.
Well, we'll make that known to the school board.
Because I always I always talk at length, don't I?
You always do and you always have good news to say.
So then the March dates are Mondays, three sixteen and three thirty.
April thirteenth and twenty-seven.
Oh, you missed one in there, sorry.
Why?
Because the twenty-sixth, three twenty-six, which is a Thursday.
Oh, yeah, we're always gonna have the joint meetings. They're noted on the budget calendar, right?
But that is the public hearing, correct?
Uh which one?
The twenty-sixth of March.
March twenty-sixth would be the 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 first public hearing, yes.
Okay, that's the first.
Hey, in May, we only have one meeting.
Imagine that.
Because the budget's done, uh two months ahead of town meeting vote, that's how it has to be.
Okay, so then Bruce into April, the date, oh, where did that go to? The dates in April, you said were the thirteenth and twenty-seventh?
Yep.
Actually, yeah, thirteenth and twenty-seventh.
And that's a, those are both Mondays.
And then you have May is the eleven.
It's the eleventh, but before that is the seventh.
You have a joint on the seventh.
And that would be the. The second public hearing, but that's not the input meeting, that's the presentation of the warrant.
That's correct.
The input meeting was in March, the twenty-sixth, right?
Right. And that's a Thursday, we said the seventh.
Then you have June twenty-second.
Those traditionally were Thursdays.
Sorry.
Um well, June twenty-second, when is election day, the ninth?
Yep.
Public hearing for the warrant.
Didn't we try to move back the June meeting of May? So it was closer to elections this last time?
So that we had the new members?
Had the new members and.
You may have.
And we were moved to, I I mean, I.
We certainly can.
For which one?
Yeah, I'd go to the fifteenth and that on June.
June fifteenth.
Instead of the twenty-second?
Personally, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Okay.
What what one?
The one in June.
Fifteen instead of the twenty-sixth.
So if you're reelected, you'll be here.
That's right, otherwise I'll be.
Not here.
Bermuda.
Not here, I'll be in Bermuda.
That would be a shame too, because if he doesn't get reelected, we're gonna do the Heritage Day.
That's right, not me.
What?
Okay.
There's a there's a there's a private employment opportunity.
By by consensus, do we accept that calendar as a working calendar? And so as we develop agenda items, some of them obviously are very budget oriented. And then we'll work in the rest of the rest of everything we need to do. If some of them end up being workshops, they could possibly also be hybrid. It could be regular meeting followed by a one-hour workshop or something like that.
So we could have a short business meeting.
Right, so yeah, we can sign documents and make appointments and stuff like that. I've tried to avoid that to try, could be in the interest of the public to keep a workshop a workshop, but.
Right.
If we if we can't, we can't.
And so that going along with our, the twenty-fifth, you have to have finished language. That we need to be doing our.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna have.
Our warrants on those earlier meetings.
Right, I'm gonna have to sit down with Chris and Eric and ghost out which ones need to be done in what order and how much time. We might take on on them.
And thank you for, I think you actually picked February Vacation Week, the eighteenth. For those of us, for that one person who's a teacher.
That one of you now, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I thought we skipped Vacation Week.
No, it's always the week of the president's holiday.
Okay.
Are we taking a motion?
But I think I'll be here.
To adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Do a couple of quick items.
Please do.
Okay.
Other business, um we do need to appoint at the request of the clerk, a warden. So if you folks could review and and uh sign that for the warden, who I think it's.
It's the same warden we've had.
Marilyn Palmer to be the warden for the, given our fourth day of November. Do we all agree that we want Marilyn Palmer to be the warden? And Deb Nichols will certify all of that? I make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Discussion. I believe she's been serving us in that capacity previous elections, so we're good.
Yes.
All in favor.
Don't forget, we're voted. Okay?
Thank you.
Now you can say it.
And this one will point out that in the other other business items, we have a report from the trails, uh excuse me.
Oh, yes, kind of a follow-up, yeah.
Yeah, follow-up explaining the trail, what the purpose is, how it came about. They've done good work and I really appreciate their efforts to try to uh circle back and and and. Resolve any questions or concerns that might have come up at that last meeting.
And were we able to send Mr. Herb that information or can we?
Uh I I think that they've they've been communicating with both him and several of the other neighbors. Also, we have the track across Maine coming through Kent Hill next summer.
Yes.
Very exciting stuff.
Oh, nice.
What we have?
Make sure your streets are swept.
So we need to make sure our streets are swept, along other things.
It could've been posed a little bit more diplomatically, I think.
You know they came this year, yes.
Bruce.
Yeah.
I know, bless him.
My left hand signature.
Wiggly baby.
Uh and the last thing I wanna point out is that we did get two bids for tree work in the cemeteries and it's a pretty clear-cut decision, so. I hope you don't mind if I go with the low bid.
Go right ahead.
Go.
All right, thank you.
Go low.
And that that's not that's not under, that's the amount you're able to do.
Well, I mean.
We don't normally.
There's a bit of a gray area, but it's it's a less than five thousand dollar expenditure, so I'm a bit more comfortable with it.
Okay, fine.
We don't need to raise everything to that level of.
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly.
That's what I was saying about.
Are you good now, Eric?
Exactly.
Road officer.
Well, I I wish I had that kind of authority. The state law actually requires for that process to happen, that it come from the municipal officers.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Some things are pro forma and that's the way it is.
Yep.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. I never allow discussion on that one, do I?
You shouldn't.
Are you gonna be able to help us out Heritage Day, not Heritage Day, Veterans Day? Like you did last year?
Last year, so.
Like you did last year.
I I did have one piece of feedback from last year.
Oh, boy.
And.
It was very loud feedback, too.
It was, yeah, is there any way the truck can be turned off during the siege?
Not even have the lights on.
Not even have the lights on.
Okay.
But you gotta get an actual microphone that works. Dennis, can you do that for us?
I will be able to work on that.
I I can leave it certainly, I mean, we can have that battery.
I don't want that to happen.
Leave no dead batteries, leave.
Well, for ten minutes, for five minutes?
An awful lot of lights on in the garage.
There's a lot of draw.
Okay, so that's.
The answer is no.
One of them trucks has all can do to sit there and idle with all the lights on and keep it.
Okay.
It's the little engine that could.
We can we can work with a small PA or a megaphone.
Right, and the other thing we could do is.
Waylon Man- Waylon Manufacturing, man and everyone.
If you moved if you moved down to the other side of the driveway, like down here. To have the actual speech part, that might help because.
Where, you wanna go?
That 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 conflicts with the memorial.
Yeah, the memorial's there.
Yeah, the memorial's up there.
We either gotta move the memorial or move the road.
I was just trying to get away from the truck. Or if you had people stand on this side of the memorial, that might be better.
I know. I know. I'll put the truck up the road and I'll put my truck in the side of the road. And then I hit my black truck.